Staff, are you ready? Good. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Kerrville City Council meeting for August 12th, 2025. Please rise for the invocation and pledge announced by Brenda Hughes.
And at this time, I would like my friend Ryan Pendergraft to lead us in prayer and the pledge.
So, air just speak up.
Go right ahead, sir.
Y'all bow your heads with me, please. Father God, we come before you in the name of Jesus, and we just lift up all the people in the community that have lost. Lord, we lift up this town, we lift up the surrounding areas, and we just pray that you give them peace and comfort and help them to move past this and recover as best they can. Lord, I want to pray that you give this council wisdom, knowledge, and discernment as they make difficult decisions moving forward in the coming days. Lord, I want to pray that you just be with the entire area as we move from the craziness, the rush, into the grind of real recovery. It is gonna be tough, and we pray that you give us the strength and resilience to do what we need to do. And lastly, I want to thank you for the way this community came together, no fuss, got it done, and helped each other, and truly exemplified the meaning of love your neighbor. Christ name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would you just turn and face the flag? If you're wearing a hat, please take it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan.
Your pleasure.
Stuart, do you have any announcements of community interests?
We have one. It's been a while, because we're kind of operating on a downsized schedule right now, but we do have an announcement tonight, and that's if you want to play kickball. You have 10 days left to sign up. We encourage you to come out and do that. Deadline is August 22nd. Entry fee is $3.50 per team.
That's what, you put 10 in the field or nine? I can't remember.
It's 10, right, just like softball. We encourage everybody, you start September 3rd. Games are on Wednesday nights out at the sports complex. If you want to feel like a kid again, come out and play this game, or just come out and watch it. It's a lot of fun. And that's our announcement for tonight, and I turn it over to y'all.
Thank you, Stuart. Any announcements from the council? Go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm pleased to announce that we're gonna go forward with our downtown Water Street Festival, October 25th. We thought about it, and the day we were trying to make the decision, the T-shirts came in. So, we said, you know, we need this, and we consulted with our other board members and committee members, and they said, yes, we need this. So, it's a one-day event from 10 to 4, Saturday, October 25th. Streets will be closed. You can grab whatever you'd like to drink and eat, and walk around, and visit with your other businesses downtown. Thank you.
This Sunday is gonna be an event called The Cars and Greens. Fortunately, the golf portion of the greens is sold out, but the guitars part is still open, available at the Arcadia, starting at 5 o'clock. Gonna have a couple of people perform that have already committed, have been committed. One guy just sang with George Strait at his event a couple of weeks ago. Kyle Park's gonna be in Kerrville. Rick Trevino was one of the first ones to commit, and another guy named Pimple Lucius is gonna be here. That's gonna be at 5 o'clock at the Arcadia Theater. All the funds, 100% of these funds are going to the Hope and Free Arts Foundation to help rebuild the Point Theater that was washed away. So, it's, you know, if you go to the Hope and Free Arts Foundation, if you want to go to the concert, go to their website, and buy tickets on the website, and the artists donated all of their time and trip over here to give back to our community. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good.
I was invited to speak tonight at a concert in Austin. Song in the Storm concert to benefit victims of the Texas floods. The headliners are Lyle Lovett and Michael Murphy. And for some reason, I chose to be here tonight, because I thought the mayor pro temp Brenda Hughes would kill me. Anyway, I hope they have a successful event, and I hope they raise a lot of money for the victims of this flood. Our next item is a presentation, and I'm gonna ask Councilman Jeff Harris to join me down front for a proclamation concerning Veterans Patriot Day, Patriot Day and 9/11. General Oates, would you care to join us?
Sure, sure.
Would you introduce us?
Absolutely. I'm not gonna read them all.
I'll read them.
He's gonna read them. Mayor Harry, General Mike Oates, I'm honored to serve on a couple of boards with you, and I'm honored that you've asked me to emcee the walk again this year for 9/11. And it's just a, it's an awareness that Mike decided he needed to make sure happened so we never forget, because some things like July the 4th, we would like to forget in the future, but things like 9/11, we never want to forget, because that was an attack on our country. And Mike, thank you for your leadership.
What I'll do is I'll read the proclamation, and I'll ask you to say a few words.
All right, sir.
All right. This is a proclamation of the city of Kerrville. Whereas, on September 11th, 2001, one of the darkest days in American history, the United States of America was attacked by Al Qaeda terrorists in New York City, Washington, DC, and in the skies over Shanksville, Ohio, killing nearly 3,000 men, women, and children. And whereas, responding to those attacks, America's law enforcement officers, firefighters, first responders, and other emergency personnel showed true heroism, and we remain forever grateful for their selfless courage in defense of our freedoms. And whereas, in the years after 9/11, United States servicemen and women deployed to Afghanistan, Iraq, Syria, and the Horn of Africa to engage in combat with Al Qaeda, the Islamic State, and others responsible for 9/11 and other terrorist attacks. And whereas, over two decades, thousands of citizens from the Texas Hill Country have answered the call to fight in the global war on terror, with three Kerr County veterans, Jacob Light, Lawrence Giselle, and Cody Orb being among those killed. And whereas, by a joint resolution, public law 107-89 approved on December 18th, 2001, the United States Congress designated September 11th of each year as Patriot Day. Now, therefore, I, Johann Jr., Mayor of the city of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2025, as Patriot Day in Kerrville, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join me and remember those who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001, and the years following in the global war on terror, and to honor all Americans who preserve liberty and security for their fellow citizens regardless of personal cost. And I've signed the proclamation. Thank you, Mayor. Please say a few words.
Well, first, Mayor, thanks very much, and council members and leaders of our city. I'd like to say thank you first for your leadership. There was saying in the Army that nothing displays character like a tragedy or tough times, and you certainly have stepped up, and thank you as a citizen. Second, I thank you for this proclamation, because sometimes it takes a tragedy for us to remember the things that are most important in life. September 11th was a traumatic event for our country and for the world. The last few years, I got to thinking, we weren't really spending much time thinking about that. And so, I appreciate the official recognition that we will take a day and recognize as Patriots' Day that we were attacked, but the 20 years after that, that many brave Americans went out and did the nation's bidding to try and keep the enemy in foreign shores, not back here. And 100%, we did not have another attack here in this country. So, thank you very much. We're gonna commemorate this event on September 11th, an easy day to remember, September 11th, out at Shriner at 5:00 PM. All of you are welcome, please. Thanks, appreciate it.
All right. Citizens, Visitors and Citizens Forum, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, we have three. Daniel Gilbranson.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, please. Go to the microphone. If you'll stay your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. That's all right, I don't need that, I can talk loud. Good evening, council. I'm Daniel Gilbranson from California. It's burning. Texas is drowning. Too extreme. Too disasters. Some of our leaders in California are standing with Band-Aids for an abdication. We've all heard the excuses. It hasn't happened for 100 years. We don't have the money. We'll form a committee. We'll get a grant. And my favorite, this should never happen again. Well, you know what? It shouldn't happen in the first place. Don't tell me we can't afford prevention, whether it's here or in California, but the cost of rebuilding is 10 times greater, is 10 times greater. Don't tell us you didn't see it coming. I'm talking about California, when history, science, and common sense all scream a warning. A leader acts before the fire starts. A leader fortifies before the flood starts hits. A leader fights for resources even when budgets are tight, because lives are not a line item of disposable victims. Let's also be honest, weather has been changing for millions of years. Stop blaming every disaster on climate change, or on Trump. Whatever political villain or boogeyman you see, you've got to trust your government, is what I hear. But without accountability, it's a blank check for disaster. But every year, we choose reaction over prevention. The bill is paid with ashes, mud, ruined lives, and deaths. Hundreds of them. Even deaths of little girls that put a name tag on their clothes to their mom and dad can find their body and know soon that it's there. So, here's my challenge to the council. Whenever you hear, "Next time, never should this happen again," be ready to tell people exactly, exactly what you've done to prevent it. Not guess about it, but prevent it. No excuses, no delays, no passing along. You know what? Fix it. And I'm sorry, I'm from California, but that state sucks. And I'm telling you, you should be thankful you're here, but you've got to stand up. We need people to stand up and address, redress our government, because if we don't, we're gonna lose it. So, thank you.
Next.
Gabriel Peralas.
Mr. Peralas, either one, it's fine.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members again. I will reiterate some of the information I shared earlier. I know we do have a couple of new faces here in the crowd. And so, my name is Gabriel Peralas, Public Information Officer with Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And I'm here for the purpose to share that SBA is still offering low-interest disaster recovery loans for the survivors of the July 4th flooding. You can get these loans if your home has suffered physical damage. You can qualify for up to $500,000 at a low 2.81% interest rate over the course of a 30-year term. If your business has been impacted and suffered physical damage, you can qualify for up to $2 million with an interest rate as low as 4%, up to a 30-year term, and again, no payments, no interest for the first year. For renters that may have suffered, personal renters and homeowners that may have suffered personal loss, whether it be clothing, vehicles, furniture, they can also qualify for $100,000 at 2.81%, no payments, no interest for the first year, and up to a 30-year term. We want to share with you that the deadline is rapidly approaching and is September 4th of 2025, and that is for anybody who has suffered physical damage at either their home or their business. So, we encourage people that are still interested in applying to reach out and either stop by one of our disaster recovery centers that we have here. And we have a disaster recovery center and a business recovery center, both in Kerrville, literally across the street from each other. And you can also still apply online at sba.gov/disaster. And so, you know, in speaking and piggybacking off of the gentleman that just spoke, one of the things that SBA doesn't talk about too often, but you can also qualify for an additional 20% for future mitigation efforts. So, if you are interested in building back better, to help save property and life in the future, mitigation might be a way to consider rebuilding, and we also offer an additional 20% of your total loss for future mitigation efforts as well. With that being said, I know that the community at large, if you weren't affected, if you're not a person that was affected here, I'm sure with a raise of hands, everybody knows somebody who was impacted. So, please pass this information along. The deadline is quickly approaching, and we certainly hope to be able to help as many people as need be for those that were either underinsured, not insured, or just don't have the means to get their rebuilding efforts back. We're here to help. So, thank you again, and we're here to help whenever needed.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas.
George Brudy.
Brudy.
George Brudy, 1616 Glen Road. You have to forgive me, I'm here really because I couldn't be here at 2:00 when you guys talked about the budget, so my little 2 cents for that. So, the main thing is just sort of plan a couple of seeds, talking about property tax. It gets talked about all the time as if it's somehow profit, when it's really just fee for service. It's basically a net zero transaction. You're paying to live in the city and receive the services that are coming to you, which is why whenever we give away property tax, whether it's future or present or whatever, you're giving away fee for service. You're basically short-falling your own budget, which you're gonna choose to direct staff to look into a little later in this budget, in this meeting. The other thing is, I haven't looked over it completely, but I have reviewed some of the proposed budget, and it talks a lot about sustainability and trying to make some, you know, wise cuts or whatever. Just keep in mind that a cut is different than a deferment. So, for instance, I think the proposed budget is deciding to hold back a little bit, I don't know, maybe it's a lot, but on asset management or asset replacement. That's not really a cut, that's just deferring that expense to another year. Big difference. The street maintenance, we're gonna kind of hold that flat. It's already in a underfunded position anyways. We know this from the last street repair report we got. It says we need $5 million to keep our streets at a static level of repair. We're only putting in $2 million a year. So, again, that's just deferring it, it's not cutting it. We need to look at ways to make legitimate cuts or come up with more revenue, and property tax revenue isn't that kind of revenue. So, and then keep in mind, again, the frozen tax situation that we have in a community like ours, any increase in property tax is really an increase on a smaller and smaller group of the population. And so, we really need to address that in some other way. Chasing after sales taxes is not bad, but just keep in mind that that's a, obviously it's a volatile situation. But then also, one last thing on these incentives that we, now I'll keep it for the discussion when you come up with it later.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Right. The next item is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine, and can be approved in one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for a separate consideration of an item. Council want to pull anything? Is there a motion then on the consent agenda?
Go ahead, Ken.
I'll second.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items 4A, 4B, and 4C.
Seconded by, any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Next item is 5A, a resolution amending the city of Kerrville fee schedule by revising various fees applicable to the use and services provided by the city's Scott Shriner Golf Course.
And Mayor, we do have one citizen speaker.
We'll get to the citizen speaker after the presentation.
Mayor, council, good evening. As everybody in this room knows, we're excited to get back open something after this terrible disaster. It's wonderful to be able to open something, and we're excited to do so. It's been closed for quite a while, the golf course, and we've made some substantial investments into that golf course. And in so doing, we contracted with Mitch Harrell to help kind of guide us through that process, so that hopefully it can be self-sustaining. And I'd like to turn the time over to him for a presentation, and then we'll answer questions as necessary. Thank you.
I want to comment on your tie. Always like an orange tie.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to be here and to be involved with the golf project at Scott Shriner Golf Course. It's been interesting, a lot of fun. We're, you know, approaching reopening on or about August 27th is kind of the date we're targeting right now, right before the Heart of the Hills tournament. We should have everything in reasonably good condition by then. We've had, you know, some stumbles along the way, obviously, with certain little things, but overall, I think everything's gonna be good. We've got new golf carts. The city's invested on or about $4 million in the project. And so, the fee schedule that's in front of you is reflective of basically a new golf course with, that's way better than what we had before, and also reflective of the other courses in the area that we compete with, which, you know, Lady Bird Johnson, Buckhorn, those type of things. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. I gotta read down the fee schedule for it.
Any questions? Go ahead, please.
Okay. When do we have our last increase on rates? Do you know the history behind our fee schedules?
I want to say it was a year ago, and it was like a dollar increase.
And then these numbers that we have here on this report, where did you get those? How did you come up with the numbers for the increases and the actual numbers of the fees?
Well, yeah, once again, it was comparing what we were charging to what Buckhorn and Lady Bird Johnson were charging, and also comparing, you know, that we've spent a significant amount of money on this golf course, and it's going to be improved and way better than what we, you know, than, you know, I think the rates are...
That's who you compared it to, was Buckhorn and Lady Bird?
Correct.
I guess that's all you have to compare it to, but then the hours, there's the prime rate. Could you just refresh my memory on what those, what that means, what's the difference?
Yeah, so using non-prime and prime rates is similar to weekday and weekend, except that, except that, you know, we would have the ability to charge more on a Friday. If, you know, a prime versus non-prime, if we were just crazy busy on a Wednesday, we might charge a prime rate on a Wednesday. It gives us the ability to move those timeframes around a little bit in peak periods.
So, would after hours, like after 3:00 during the week, be a time when you might actually not charge as much, maybe?
Yes.
Because I've been approached by a lot of families who literally after they all get home after dinner, they go hit the driving range with the kids.
Sure.
And I do think they're gonna be the ones most affected by the rate increase. Not that it's not warranted, because I voted on the $4 million. I mean, I believe that we needed those improvements, and it's definitely been an investment. But I just want to make sure that we consider everyone, not just the seniors that have been playing there for many, many years, but families as well.
Well, and I believe that on the list, if you look down, there are twilight rates.
I guess I didn't know what time that...
Yeah, so, and again, that time can change depending on time of year. It's basically twilight rate would be at a time when you probably couldn't finish 18 holes.
Right, just play nine, okay. That's all I had, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
I totally support what you're doing, Mr. Harrell and Jay, thank y'all. I'm fortunate enough, I know Mitch, and I know his background, and I know where he came from, and I've actually been out and played his course in Arizona. 20-plus years in the golf business, I know that you did your due diligence in finding rates to be comparable. I know as soon as we closed Shriner, Lady Bird Johnson raised their rates. So, they weren't really trying to take care of the Kerrvillians that would go there and play golf. Buckhorn did the same thing. $4 million, you gotta, you know, you gotta recoup some way, somehow. It's, the rates have to go up. I can't tell you how many years I've played on the weekends at Shriner, and I paid $32 with a golf cart. It's the best deal in Texas for a great golf course designed by Joe Finger. There was an article the other day that I just want to clarify a little bit, it was in the newspaper, said we got new greens and a new clubhouse. There's a little bit more to it than that. We got new greens, new tee boxes, and new bunkers with capillary concrete in it, and I was over there with Mr. Hornish one day, when y'all rejected a load of sand because it was not the right bunker sand that they shipped. We're not taking it. So, the time, the money, and the effort that's been put into it, and the management skills and everything that y'all have done to make Scott Shriner Golf Course what it is and what it's gonna be, great job, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
So, do these fees cover the expenses?
Yes, sir, they do.
So, you've done projections, and you got, so this is, I mean, it's not just market analysis, but this will, I mean, one of the things we're really trying to do is not to have the golf course be a drain on our general fund budget, which Mr. Brudy is correct to point out, we have a lot of stress on already.
Yes, sir.
And so, so it's really, I mean, it's more, I mean, we have to have a market rate. I mean, there's no use driving people away, you know, but we also need to know it's gonna cover expenses, and we're not gonna be in the hole again down the road and have to borrow a bunch more money. I think partly we're too cheap, too long, and it's a little shock to make the change, but this is pretty cheap golf for a refurbished golf course, I think, or even, even if it's not completely refurbished, this is still pretty cheap. Golf courses are not cheap places, to main thing.
No, sir. And Ken, if you'll allow me, you know, the rates proposed are a range of rates, right? So, you can see that it's a range of rates. So, we will flex to what the needs are of the golf course. So, if we feel like, okay, we're not getting enough play on a Tuesday afternoon, we can change rates. If we feel like, okay, we, you know, Saturday morning is really, really busy, and I'm just throwing, you know, throwing those kind of things out. So, that gives us a range to work with, number one. In the past, I think you've only approved a rate. And from, you know, from what the team has told me, they've always just charged that rate. Doesn't matter, if they're not getting any business, they're still charging just that rate. So, I'm gonna work with them to try to make sure that we flex and move and try to get money in the door at all times. Secondarily, I worked with Julie Behrens and the finance team, and Rosa, and Jay... Secondarily, I worked with Julie Behrens and the finance team, and Rosa, and Jay, in working out budget concerns and things like that, and the team at the golf course, Randy and Bobby as well, to make sure that we had the adequate amount of funds to get the job done, keep the golf course in good condition, but then also to make sure that we had the revenue stream to cover that, and maybe spin off a little bit of money for us, so.
Good? Brenda?
Oh, yeah, I just want to reiterate that, you know, this was a quality of life project, and a lot of our quality of life projects cost the taxpayers. And to have one that potentially can generate some revenue and make it a little bit lighter on the taxpayer, I'm all for. I don't play golf, I don't know what they charge to play golf, but there are three people here that do play golf, and y'all say that the fees are fair, and that's what matters to me, so.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Do you have a citizen speaker?
Yes, sir. George Eigner.
Eigner.
Good evening, George Eigner, 604 Cardinal Drive. Thank you all. The only question I have is, I read in the paper that there was going to be a non-resident fee, is that true?
Yes, sir.
And I think that's a terrible idea, that you got to show your ID card in order to play golf, that Lady Bird Johnson, Flying the All Ranch, and Buckhorn do not have a non-resident fee. Frederickburg used to, Lady Bird used to, but they dropped it. And I've been playing over there for, since Shrinor's been closed, and, but you consider the tourism that comes here, our winter Texans and all that, I think that's a bad message. We need to raise, you know, raise the other regular fees up two, three, four, or five dollars to compensate for that, but don't gouge the visitors. That's all I got to say, thanks.
George. Some may say, instead of gouging the visitors, we're benefiting the residents, so that's how I would look at it. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to say one more thing about that. I think these are very fair rates. I just know there are some that play a lot, that are families, that may go out four times a week, and even if they bought your annual membership, that's, I see that, 1,200? That's 1,200, then if you had another spouse that wants to play, that's another 1,000. And I don't know what the savings is, but I don't know how many would be able to afford 2,200 by the annual membership fee. So, I'll probably vote for this, because I do think, for me, this is a very fair rate, but I am thinking about some of the families that this might be a hardship, and even some of our seniors that are on tight budgets. So, it'd be nice to see some programs coming down the road that maybe you have a month in the summer where you have a deal for families, or seniors over 65, or something like that. That's all.
Thank you.
You do have flexibility for promotional rates?
Yes, sir.
Do you?
We have opportunity to change these rates.
Sure.
I mean, these are not necessarily concrete forever. I mean, it's something, whatever is not working, it can take.
Right.
All right, is there a motion then on this resolution?
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-2025, amending the city's fee schedule to revise golf course fees.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next item is Resolution Number 25-2025. Mr. Paxton.
And we do have one citizen speaker.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I should have asked.
This is a resolution for an extraterritorial jurisdiction release at 873 Harper Highway. There's a zoom in of that map. This is north on Harper Highway, adjacent to the city limits, currently houses a fireworks stand. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
We don't really have any choice.
If it's not approved by council, it does, it is approved by operation of law, that's correct.
We have, any questions for Mr. Paxton?
Now I know what it is. For some reason, I didn't get a map, so now I know, and I didn't know what the use was. You said fireworks?
Yes.
Okay.
One citizen speaker, ma'am.
George Broody.
George Broody, still 606, 6011. So, I had one question, and then probably a follow-up comment, but did this applicant, and this really applies to the next item as well, did they get charged, and did they pay this fee that we installed recently?
I'll have to look into that, I'm not sure.
Okay. I don't know if you all are aware, but this is the process where we, at you guys, voted to add a fee that, as you rightly pointed out, is pointless. It's also arguably not in your authority to do so. If you told the applicant, or the petitioner, is the word that gets used, that the fee was required, then that would be a lie. Because as he pointed out, all that they're required to do is present a name that owns the property, and a description of the property with a map. And if they do that, and is verified as the owner by the secretary, then it's done. You don't need a resolution, you don't need to have council view it, the law says immediately after they submit it, it's done. So, we're essentially wasting staff time, your time, and ours, going over this right now. And the only reason to have added that fee is to hopefully disincentivize, or kind of steer someone away from getting out of the ETJ, which again, doesn't make a lot of sense, because we don't really get anything out of them being in the ETJ, and neither do they. The last whereas clause says, this resolution is necessary and proper for the city to release the property from the ETJ. It's neither necessary nor proper, because as he correctly points out, all that's necessary is someone go to their deed, bring their deed in, hand it to the city secretary, and say, "We want out of the ETJ." Done. It's over, and no big deal. So, I don't know why we're here. I assume we've created this process for some reason, I don't know what it is. Maybe that's my question. Why are we going through this process when it's totally unnecessary, and the law says immediately after receiving the petition, it's valid, they're released. So, maybe help us out, understanding why we're even here for these two items.
Mr. Broody, when you served on city council, did you take advice from yourself or from the city attorney?
Both, but I will say that, since you asked the question, many times, I was forced to take the advice and double-check it, because...
You have a law degree? Are you licensed practice law?
Don't need one. A law degree gives you the right to represent someone else, not to understand the law.
While I serve on this council, I'm going to take legal advice from someone who actually has a law degree.
That's fine.
Licensed to practice law in the state of Texas.
Right, practice means represent someone else, so I'm...
I'm happy to hear your views on the law, but I don't agree with them.
Okay, and I'm not here to give you a legal interpretation. I was here asking you a question. Why are we here if the presenter tells you, and he tells you, that there's nothing you're actually doing here?
Are you done?
Huh?
Are you done?
Okay, you engaged.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Good. All right. Is there a motion on Resolution Number 24-2025?
I move that we approve.
There's a second.
26-2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Item 5C.
Actually, it should have been 25-2025.
Did I say it wrong?
I said the wrong one, or maybe we both did, or whatever, but it was...
25-2025.
25-2025.
All right. Do we need to make that motion again? We can.
We all understood, even if we said it wrong.
Item 5C, Resolution Number 26-2025. Mr. Paxton.
This is another extraterritorial jurisdiction release at 2660 Junction Highway. This is also a existing fireworks stand.
All right, do we have any citizen speakers on this one?
No, sir.
Surprise. Any discussion, or is there a motion then on Resolution 26-2025?
I'll make a motion on Resolution Number 26-2025.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Item 5D, development agreement with Whiskey Springs Development LLC. Mr. Hornis.
Members of the council, good evening. So, this was an item that we were to take up a month ago, and like everything, we have to push, but like everything, we still have to come back and do the business that we're here to do. And so, tonight, we're going to consider the development agreement between the City of Kerrville and the Whiskey Springs Golf Resort. Additionally, further down, we will discuss another item, which is a reimbursement agreement between Unicap, it's kind of like our engineers. We're just sort of a conduit through which that money funnels. And then finally, the continuation of Public Improvement District public hearing. Tonight, we have Mr. Dale Beto and his associate, Mr. Jim Boydin, and we also have Pablo Brinkman here, and I believe their engineer, Michael Wilburn, is here from their team, and we have, from kind of our side, I guess, Jennifer...
Same side?
We're all on the same side. Jennifer Sloan from Unicap, who represents us as a kind of financial, one of the financial advisors for this piece. But yes, we are, we all sit at the table and intermingle, it's not opposite sides. Just, it's been a minute since we talked about it, so an overview of this, it's at the intersection of I-10 and Highway 16. Some of the features, the hotel, I think the hotel at the golf course is less than 300 rooms, I think it's 180 rooms, give or take, and then there's two other hotels that will be closer to Highway 16 that will make up the bulk of those 300 rooms. Tournament-level golf course, large lot residential properties. I know that that number's not right, it's like 368, and I just didn't get a chance to change it. Several commercial lots, most of those adjacent to Highway 16, but a few of them kind of interior to the property, once you get past kind of the Quinland Creek area. And then, multifamily units, kind of condo regimes, and 70 of those. This is kind of, we discussed this previously, that the current appraisal value of that property was $7 million. Kind of one of the things that I wanted to highlight in this is, there's been a development agreement in existence for this property for 21 years. And I've gone through, in my three-plus years here, a few iterations, and I know staff from Public Works has certainly done the same, kind of all to no avail. It's a challenging piece of property, right? Topography's, it's got a lot of twists and turns, and Mr. Beto and his group saw that and didn't see a challenge, they saw an opportunity in there. And so, he's already carved out the entire golf course. It's an interesting-looking course. I'd bet I'd lose a lot of golf balls at that place. But moving on, the estimates we have on the build-out value just of the land, once it's parceled out, is about $238 million, and then at full build-out, looking at about a $1.1 to $1.2 billion valuation at full build-out. So, I just, part of what I try to wrap my head around when I'm talking to folks, is that you have this non-producing property that has sat vacant for 21 years, with a lot of ideas, and then no one to really push all the way through those ideas. And these folks have come in, and they've, you know, we're skeptics by nature when folks come and talk to us. We don't, I'm untrustworthy, and it's just my nature, and they have kind of continued to change my mind about that every time. Every time we have a question or concern, they go figure out the answer, and come back, and always ready to stand and kind of talk at the table. So, one of the biggest concerns was the water supply, right? Now, this is an entitled piece of property, which means, kind of by law, we have to serve it, right? And so, we had kind of a strict adherence to what that would be. This thing had its own planned development district for so many homes, for so much commercial property, for so much multifamily property, and the golf was a really big challenge, because that's just a lot of water, and nobody else is on potable water. And so, a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions. They are going to, as you can see in the development agreement, put together a pretty big package of public infrastructure, to include storage ponds on the city site, which they will build and construct, as well as storage ponds on their property. Why do they have to build a storage pond on our facility and on their own? Well, they have to do that because right now, we don't have enough in the drought times for a 90-day supply. So, we told them, you have to have a big enough storage capacity to hold 90 days' worth of water when we cut the service off, because we have customers who already need it, and they're already obligated for it, and they were last in line. And so, they, again, it was just another iteration at the table of, how are we going to accomplish this task? And they keep showing up. And so, that's part of that, is for them to build all that reuse infrastructure. And so, they'll build a 10-mile line, I think, 11-mile line, from our plant to their facility. They're going to have their own on-site storage facility or package plant, and all of that golf is irrigated by reclaimed water. So, what does that mean for us? And, all right, you got to excuse me, I'm running on a little sleep, and I think I'm out of order. Essentially, when councils approved this years ago, they said, "We want to reserve half a million gallons for us, for direct injection, for direct potable reuse, for reverse osmosis, as a future water source." And so, Public Works and myself and the developers, you know, we talked about that, when the city decides we want to implement a project like that, it's going to take several years from kind of start to completion. And so, in that interim, while they're doing their grow-in period, we would allow them to use that half a million gallons for that grow-in period, so that way, they can build up their storage ponds, so when summer hits, they have enough. We have the excess right now, we're not using it. And now, that only applies for their grow-in period. Once that's over, that part comes back to us. What we've also agreed to is, any new wastewater, any new wastewater that's created, so Lenar's new buildings, the Blue Wood Apartments, Comanche Traces expansion, they would have kind of write a first refusal, let's say, on 50% of that new. Now, why should we let them do that? Well, they're putting in tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure for their reuse. And so, we have a cap on that amount, which is a big number on an annual basis, but most of the golf courses, Comanche Trace being one example, uses about 250 million gallons of reused water a year. And so, that's kind of where we hit that mark. So, they could take new wastewater, 50% of that, up to 250 million gallons. Now, they're going to also produce their own wastewater, once they get to full build-out, but that's going to take 10 years or so. And so, there's a lot of moving parts in all of this. Stop me if you have questions, or I've said something that's confusing. Back real quick. So, 100% reclaimed water for the golf irrigation. One of the bigger pieces is, what we've talked about a lot, is the low-impact design. So, they're going to have to have, they're going to have a property owners association, they're going to follow kind of the Hill Country Guide to sort of how you do your landscaping. We asked them to include the Hill Country Alliance's kind of model HOA language in there to help work through that. They're going to have their own architecture review board for the homes, and Dale is committed to, if the tree's there, when you bought the property, the tree's going to stay there. to, if the tree's there, when you bought the property, the tree's going to stay there once your house is built. And here's where you're allowed to build your stuff. Okay, what is before you tonight? So Public Improvement District, their estimate is high, but they want to, you want to shoot beyond what you think you need, and then hopefully it's less than that. So the PID request is for them to take out up to two-hundred million dollars in PID bonds. That finances that infrastructure, it's, it's paid through assessments borne by the property owners themselves, so that's split out. If you have questions about the PID, how that apportion's out, Jennifer Sloan here can help us with those answers. The second piece is the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone, so this would be the third we have here in Kerrville, for a forty-year term. And what we discussed was thirty percent of the maintenance and operations tax. So not this, like every other project that we've done, where we have an incentive like this, this doesn't include interest in sinking or debt. This is only the maintenance and operations piece. So it is a low-density, kind of high-impact community, and when we looked at it that way, it made a lot of sense to include this. And then additionally, a three-eighty agreement, which will include sales and hotel occupancy tax rebates at thirty-five percent for twenty years, and that's starting in 2029. Now, mind you, all of these are performance-based. They are on the hook for two-hundred million dollars' worth of debt. Until they start getting properties that produce any kind of revenue, that's on their ledger. Doesn't come back to the city, it's not a, it's not a debt obligation of the city, it doesn't affect our credit rating. It is just a financing mechanism that allows them, it's another tool in the toolbox. Okay, we had talked, the first two sections of the, of the agreement, you have your recitals, right? The wherethes, why are we doing what we're doing, right? The second section of that goes into the definitions, and I'm glad we have the definitions in there. There are six pages, I think, of definitions, it's a lot. But then we get into kind of the meat of it, which is deals, section three deals with the authorized improvements, so all the things that the developers are going to have to build before they turn it over to us. So it's the same process we use for any other development. Streets, utility lines, raw water lines, or, sorry, reuse lines, their storage ponds, the storage pond that they're going to build out at our facility. They have to build those to our specs, they have to get inspected by our folks, they have to get approved, they have to have maintenance bonds after the fact, same as every other project. So section three talks about that. Section four goes into additional obligations, so that onsite wastewater treatment plant, we really don't want to be in the business of having a separate wastewater plant. That was kind of our intention the whole time, was that would be the responsibility of the developer, for them to take that on. So the reclaimed water piece, we will, starting in October, I think we worked it where it was, October, they would tell us how much water they estimate they need throughout the year, and then it's kind of just a delicate balance of, we're filling the pond, they're using some of it to irrigate, and then they're filling the pond, and we do all that during the time when it's, there isn't a whole lot of need for it, right? In the wintertime, it's, it's a lot easier to just pump, because everybody still uses just about the same amount of wastewater all year. But they don't irrigate, you know, not many of us irrigate in the wintertime. And again, we will supply that raw water that is, that is for the city's purpose, just for that grow-in period, and allocate fifty percent of that new wastewater, up to two-hundred-and-fifty million gallons per year. There's a mandatory POA, tree preservation requirements, native and drought-tolerant plants and grasses. The park dedication feature that's in there is also not a public park, so we didn't want new park systems. And they, they will maintain open trail systems within there, and that would satisfy the park dedication portion of that. But again, not public parks, so nothing for us to have to maintain. Section five goes into the PID and the bonds, and just deals with a whole lot of that. It's kind of repetitive in, in a lot of this. We speak to it in terms of whose obligations they are, are they ours, are they theirs? And then in terms of how the PIDs can function, what they can actually pay for. And then section six deals with the TERS agreement and the three-eighty agreement. And again, that TERS is thirty percent for up to forty years, and three-eighty agreement for thirty-five percent of the sales tax and hot tax for twenty years. And again, I'll say that those are, they have to perform, right? This is not, here's cash, go do your thing. If you build it and you produce, then we will give you that rebate. Section seven, eight, and nine, kind of get into all the legal questions, and if y'all have those, Mr. Hayes is right here, he can handle those for you. And there are nine exhibits, and we apologize for that, but there are, that's probably a five-hundred-page contract when it's all said and done. Most of that's the provisions of the HOA and, and the, the other guidelines for the native plants. And with that, next steps, if you all decide to, approving the development agreement. Later on in the agenda is the creation of the PID and the payment resolution. And then at future meetings, we would go for the PID piece, we would work through a preliminary service and assessment plan, which is basically how, how it's going to get apportioned, how it's going to get paid, cost determinations, several more agreements and ordinances into the future, this is for the PID. And then for the TERS piece, we'd work through a preliminary finance plan, public hearing notice, and then a draft ordinance. So those are all pending items to come into the future, should we, should you all decide to proceed with this. And I'm going to stop talking now, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hornis?
On the, the hot, the thirty-five percent hot tax.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a number at all of what that thirty-five percent is of, what that total is? I mean, I know it's estimated, but you're saying that they're performance-based?
Well, so if there isn't a hotel, right, then there's no incentive, you know? And if there, there is a hotel in the estimates, I, I have it, just.
I actually do, too. If you want me to share it, I will.
Okay.
Jim, if you have that information at your disposal? Or Pablo, if you do. There it is. All right, so the forty-year estimates on the hot tax is one-hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars.
Okay. That's forty, and you had twenty-five on your slide.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for the hot, sorry.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. So, yeah, I have a better number than that.
That's all I needed, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Good, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just had one quick question, and that is, on page fifteen, you talk about the traffic impact analysis, and I was just wondering when that needs to be done.
So that's a function of the plating process, and so that would have to be done kind of on that first plat, but that would.
Approximately, when would that happen?
Well, it's kind of all predicated on what we do now, right?
Oh, well, yes.
They'll, they'll move forward with the PNC process fairly quickly. That, that piece will probably go faster than.
Okay.
Our agreements.
Because I'm just curious about.
And, and so they do that, they'll do that based on the densities, density estimates that they have, and, and so that would suffice for, they would do one kind of master traffic impact analysis for the whole development.
Okay.
Right? Thank you. All right.
Other comments or questions? Let's hear from our citizen speakers.
Pablo Brinkman.
Mr. Brinkman.
Pablo Brinkman, thirty-nine, twenty-eight, Oak Park Drive, Mayor Herring Council, first time before you since the fourth. I just want to personally say thank you to each one of you and to staff, and for representing. I've never been more proud to be a resident and being a part of Kerrville. My family moved here in nineteen-sixty-eight. We've been a part of Kerrville, and with that, we see different kind of growth, different kind of deals. Colleen and I, my wife and our firm, being a part of the whiskey team has been unlike any other thing that I've ever been a part of. The willingness and the education that I'm continually getting, some I don't want from Del Beto, but I get. But, you know, this tract, those that have lived here all since, you know, remember going there and having an ostrich eat corn and peck us, and I had a giraffe that, that bit me on the chest one time and tore a piece of skin out. And so we've seen that kind of come and go, and it's always just kind of been there, it's been a ceiling fan, you don't recognize it, you're just kind of go, and you're heading sixteen north, you know, or east, or you're coming into Kerrville, it's just kind of been there. And when you go and you see what the whiskey team has done with this property, and I, I think, I know it took somebody coming here with just a whole fresh approach, who's not scared of, you can't build that here, you can't do those kind of things. Because Dale and Andy, they'll, they're on machines daily carving things up, and so this is an opportunity for Kerrville to have a lot of things. Yes, there's going to be a private golf course, but the amount of retail, the amount of infrastructure we're going to have from local, regional, national, on a retail level, and the hotel capacities that we're looking at, it's, it's just an amazing project that, that Colleen and I are blessed to be a part of. But I think more so, it's, it's the right time, more so than ever, to lift up and have an opportunity. I know Jim will speak to that a little bit, but I just wanted to thank y'all personally for everything you've done since July fourth, and of course, everything beyond. But I've just never been more proud to, to be a resident here and look you in the eye and stand beside you. So thank y'all for everything y'all did.
Thank you.
George Broody.
Mr. Broody.
Do you mind if I, just real quick, so the, the calculations for the hot participation, so the, the total was over forty years, right? But it's a twenty-year incentive, the total for forty years. One-hundred-and-forty-five million is, is the whole range for that, and their portion that they would get back would be nineteen million.
Okay.
A little bit over that.
Thank you.
Twenty years, they would get nineteen, and then the city's portion from start to forty years, which is beyond that, one-hundred-and-twenty-six million.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry, George.
You ready, Mr. Broody?
Broody, sixteen-sixteen Glen Road. It is an exciting project, I'm not going to disagree with that. I don't like the way it's laid out for a couple of reasons. The one main one is, when it was first presented, asking about the PID, the beauty of a PID is the development pays for itself, right? And when it was presented as a PID, that's what we were told. No other asks, this is what's going on, two-hundred-million-dollar investment, we need a PID to finance it, boom. Now you're going to add a TERS and a three-eighty agreement, the, the TERS itself kind of undercuts the beauty of the PID, because it's actually a tax rebate. Add to that that, think about who we're incentivizing. The developer is building the house, who's creating the property tax wealth, if you want to call that well? The homeowner or the property owner is paying the property tax, but we're going to rebate, divert their tax to them. So it's underfunding the government for its services. If it's not underfunding the government, then why don't we give a thirty percent rebate to everybody else that's living here? Of course, we wouldn't do that, because then our, it would under, underfund the budget. So why do it for somebody new? Property tax is not profit. When you're messing with sales tax, now you're talking about something else. Now, this project, sales tax, who are we giving the rebate to? The person who built the business, I mean, built the building, not the hotel operator who is actually creating the hot fund. The retail outlet that's creating the sales tax is the one who's creating the wealth, deserves the incentive. Because if you give it upfront to the developer who builds the building, when you're trying to incentivize a company coming here, who do you give it to? You don't give it to the building owner, you give it to the guy who's creating the wealth. It makes no sense. Now, they might stand up behind me and say, if we can't get this, then we can't do the development. Okay, back to the original point Mr. Hornis brought up, currently, it's appraised at something. They don't show what the current cost burden is for this land. Right now, it's zero. There's no burden on the community for servicing that land, it's doing nothing, so it's all free money. Now, future appraised value is going to have something, some large number. I don't see any estimate of what the cost burden's going to be. That seems relevant to the discussion. The numbers that somebody asked about, and he was giving us, that should have been the lead story of this discussion. How much is the ask? What's the, it's an estimate, I get it, but how much is that over time? We're dealing with a budget right now, this year, that we're worrying about a few hundred thousand dollars of shortfall. And we're talking about millions of dollars of givebacks. And we're acting as though there's no cost burden to this community, this development. If all, it becomes a regional store, a regional place, what's that mean? That means people are coming here, they're driving on our streets, there's, there's all that. All the homes that are there, that takes police and fire protection, it's insurance, they may never have a fire, but you have to have a force that's able to, to support that. We have to be having that as part of this discussion, I don't understand why that's not there. Now, I understand today isn't the day you're actually creating the details of this, so the framework, maybe, maybe you don't even care, I don't know. But again, a PID followed by a TERS, it makes no sense. It's, it's, one is, is a, is a self-sustaining one, and the other one is, is a cost burden to the rest of the community. I don't know how you pay that off. Well, I do know how, just sit and wait, and we'll see. The, the reuse water, one last question about the reuse water. I'm not sure the numbers he was.
The timer went off.
Oh, that was it?
Yes.
Okay, well, just check the numbers on that, and the infrastructure cost is going to go unused.
If they take it to their plant.
You can ask me, we can talk after a few minutes.
Any other citizen speakers?
No, sir.
All right. We have been talking about this as a council for a long time. We've gone to executive session, where we've tried to go over all the different details, the variations of details, the variations of, of this very long development agreement. This development, this property was approved for development twenty-one years ago. People have come and gone, trying to figure out how to make a development there that will serve the needs of our community. And I'm of the opinion, we've finally found someone that will do that. I've found a company that will build development that will serve the needs of our community. I'd be happy to entertain a motion then on item five D.
I'll make a motion that we approve this development agreement that we've just reviewed with Whiskey Springs relating to the use and development of seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven acres within the city to be known as Whiskey Springs.
Your second.
I'll second.
I'll third.
Sign it by council member McKenney. Need a discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Go ahead, please.
Say, say a few things, and Mr. Broody makes good points from a certain perspective, and I think council and through all its deliberations have taken a little different perspective. And Mr. Broody points out, yes, you know. And Mr. Broody points out, yes, you know, developer might not do this without the incentives that we're offering, or not. But we're going through the budget process and difficulties, a lot of the difficulties that we have is that we're overly dependent on residential. This is not strong on the residential side of things. Houses will be nice and expensive, but we're going to have three hotels, we're going to have retail spaces, and they'll be paying. It'll be opportunity to lessen the load on the residential homeowners over time by having that. We are in, just by adding the volume, we have efficiencies that can be picked up over time. And yes, we may add a certain percentage of population, but we're not necessarily having the same percentage of expense for fire and police. So the, some of the growth is necessary. If we don't have new properties added to the community, that's the only way we're even managing close to budget this year is because we have a little larger amount of new properties on the tax rolls. If we don't have new properties on the tax rolls, we're sunk for our general fund. The state caps us at 3.5%. We do have those that are frozen. We really only can do about 2.5%. Inflation has been way over that. And we're in a real box for property tax income. And we don't, we have a hard time taking risks, especially for a piece of property that's been looked at for 20 years or more and is sitting there doing nothing. We really need to take the land that's in the city limits and get it developed. And we never have to write anything out of our pocket. We're going to generate a lot of income, and yes, we won't get to keep it all, but we're going to have a whole lot of income we wouldn't have otherwise. And George is not wrong, but we need the growth. And I think we've all decided that we are... Thanks to the generals, so far as we've been deciding, and I'm certainly in favor of giving some of this back to make sure that we have this kind of growth and prosperity. This can put Kerrville, we're on the map. Now, there's a, there must be a thousand communities in Kerrville that, I mean, in Texas, that people don't even know where they are, but people know Kerrville. And we're a garden spot in the state, in a great state. And this kind of project is just really icing on the cake, I think. So we're really, I think we're really glad that these gentlemen are here helping our community. And it's a little bit of price to pay, and we appreciate them being here and investing their money in our community. And we think as a community, we can invest a little bit back to help make sure that it happens.
Any other discussion? Right, a motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Item 5E, professional services reimbursement agreement between the City of Kerrville and Whiskey Springs Development. Please, Mr. Hornis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is, it's just kind of a function of how Munichap and our other financial advisors through this process, the mechanism that they would get paid. And so the agreement is between the city and Whiskey Springs. They would deposit initially $25,000, and then so we've had, Mike Hayes has had some consultation with PIT attorneys. Jennifer and her team from Munichap have already kind of done some work. This gets that process started whereby we could get them paid. So as those funds are drawn down, as Munichap and our financial advisors and bond counsel, et cetera, do their work, those funds would be replenished. Or if it's quick and easy, those funds would be returned back to Whiskey Springs. But this enables us to not have a cost to the taxpayer for this, like the creation of all these documents. This will go for the PID documents, the TIRS documents, kind of from soup to nuts. And so we have similar process with freezing nickels or with our stormwater engineers where it's a pass-through fee. It's paid for by the developer. We take in those funds, then we turn that around and disperse it. So there's nothing we collect out of this. We just, it's again, a pass-through fee. And with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hornis? Do you have any citizen speakers?
Yes, sir, we have one. Pablo Brinkman.
Mr. Brinkman.
Hi, Yeo.
Hi.
That is a first.
I'm shocked.
Any questions for Mr. Hornis? Is there then a motion on this professional services reimbursement agreement?
I'll move to approve the professional services reimbursement agreement.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is 6A. These are ordinances with public hearings. Let's start with 6A. Shelley, would you mind reading that in?
Certainly. Ordinance number 2025-15, an ordinance submitting chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas zoning code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 225 Shriners Street from a residential transition zoning district RT to a downtown arts and cultural zoning district DAC and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to change the zoning at 225 Shriners Street from RT to DAC, Downtown Arts and Culture District. It is adjacent to an existing portion of the downtown arts and culture district as part of the catalyst area for downtown. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this actually back in May. This was pushed from our, or June. This was pushed from our July meeting for the public hearing tonight. And the applicant is here if you have any specific questions about the property. Be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, I've been very talkative tonight, but, okay. I was curious about the reason for this particular change to a downtown arts and cultural zoning district. Why wouldn't they just have, I'm not even sure what the use intentions are. Is it for office space?
The reason for the change is to allow more flexibility through setbacks in the downtown arts and culture district. As far as the use, I would defer to Mr. Champagne.
Okay. That would be great.
Go ahead, please.
It's currently used as Airbnb, and so if we could get the parking lot line, we could expand on the property to have more income-producing property.
I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Carrie Champagne, 225 Shriners Street.
So you'll consider the parking needs?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for the applicant or for Mr. Paxton? Right, is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, we have to have a public hearing first, correct?
Yes, sir.
Let me go ahead and open a public hearing at 7:18. Anyone can speak, you didn't have to sign up. Go ahead, please.
I'm curious. Nikki Keynes, I live in the city. I'm just curious what the difference is, like you were saying, from an RT, and he said it's currently like an Airbnb. And he wants to change it to the downtown arts and cultural zoning district so he can add on to it?
Is that what you meant?
Correct. So if it's, if it's already zoned for that, what benefit is it to changing it to this, the arts and cultural?
That's kind of what my question was to...
Mr. Paxton.
So the development regulations, specifically the setbacks, are reduced in downtown arts and culture district. So it allows them to build closer to the property line than RT does.
Any other questions for the applicant or Mr. Paxton? We're still in a public hearing. Anybody else wish to speak? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:20. Happy to entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning change, ordinance number 2025-15 on first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes. Item 6B, another ordinance. Shelley, would you mind reading that in?
Certainly. Ordinance number 2025-16, an ordinance submitting chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas zoning code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 1421 East Main, consisting of approximately 1.77 acres out of the JA Tavi addition and within the city of Kerrville, Carr County, Texas, from a neighborhood commercial zoning district C1 to a light commercial zoning district C2 and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a change from C1, neighborhood commercial zoning district to light commercial zoning district C2. It is surrounded by RT and R1. Again, it is existing commercial zoning. It is within the neighborhood residential district of the Kerrville 2050 Future Land Use Map, which does allow for small amounts of commercial and carefully chosen locations. Just a quick photo of the property, as you can see, there is one adjacent home. There's an existing office on the property, and the goal is to open a cabinet shop for the remainder of the building. Later this month, you'll have a conditional use permit before you for the cabinet shop as well. There is an existing screening fence that would meet the zoning requirement adjacent to the residential. And based on the flood zone on the property, there'd be very limited room for any expansion of the business from the existing footprint. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval in July. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton?
Was that unanimous, the planning and zoning?
I believe so. Stephen, do you remember?
There was one.
One descending?
I think there was one.
Okay, sorry.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Does he just speak? You need your name and address for the record.
Stephen Butcher, 3200 Pinnacle Club Drive. So I purchased this property through Mike Stavanoa, and honestly, I'm in residential construction, so I'm pretty ignorant when it comes to commercial construction. And so going into it, and I used his daughter as a realtor too, and she's not a commercial real estate agent. And so going into it, we didn't even think about even asking about zoning with it being a laundromat. You know, I just assumed, and we all know what assumptions get us. But, so I'm just here. We have a cabinet shop on Junction Highway right now, and we're just looking to get it closer into town, a bigger spot to where we can hire on some more employment and just have it closer to our job locations.
Thank you. Mr. Butcher, any questions?
I'm sorry.
Any questions for Mr. Butcher?
You're just, you're closing down the laundromat and replacing it with a cabinet shop, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And we've already upgraded a lot of things on that, on the building now. One side of it's going to be, my plumber is going to be ophiced on one side, and then the cabinet shop would be on the other side.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have some questions, like, would there be anything that you would manufacture or do that would be kind of offensive to a residential neighborhood, like storage of lumber or noise levels when you're making these pieces, whatever, as a resident? You have, I don't know if we got a letter from the lady who lives next door, but I'm just curious what you would have contained in your building versus what might be outside your building that might interfere with a quiet, calm residential neighborhood.
Sure, yeah. So as far as the noise, we're not doing any painting onsite, so that, or as far as fumes and stuff, for sure, because the lacquer would probably make a lot of people mad. So we have a shop injunction that we take all of our cabinets to, to get sprayed. Now, as far as manufacturing cabinets, you know, we'll have table saws and such going, but doors will be closed. We have duct systems going in for the sawdust, and then, you know, we're going to still have AC and heat, so the guys won't have to open windows. And all of our storage will be inside.
I know you have a pretty good storage area anyway, though, which is good. Okay, that helps a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of anyone before I open the public hearing? Go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:25. Anyone can speak, you don't have to have signed up. Mr. Brinkman.
Pablo Brinkman, 39, 28, Oak Park Drive. This was my listing prior to Stacy signing or selling it. Highest and best use, this makes sense for Mr. Butchers and what he's doing. There's a lot of buffer. There's a whole triangle of land in the back that he'll be able to put things, you know, there's an easement back there. And so, you know, as far as noise, I don't think anything. When he answered about the lacquer, that was my only question too, delaying was that. But it's making the best use of this from going to the C2, in my opinion.
I went and looked at it, and I agree.
Anyone else speak? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:26. Entertain a motion on ordinance number 2025-16.
I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning change on ordinance number 2025 on first reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 6C, this is another ordinance. Shelley, will you read us in, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-17, an ordinance submitting chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas zoning code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 2210 Highway 173, Bandera Highway, Lot 2, Block 1, out of the Oak Hollow Estates addition and within the city of Kerrville, Carr County, Texas, from a neighborhood commercial zoning district C1 to a light commercial zoning district C2 and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Paxton.
This is Ms. McLehan, and said, zone change at 2210 Highway 173, Bandera Highway. This, if we had noticed this, or a question had come up closer to the adoption of the current zoning code, I think this would have been a prime example of a incorrect application of the new zoning district. C1 is typically tucked into a neighborhood where this is on the highway, so C2 is absolutely appropriate for this location. The new updated Future Land Use Map has this identified as community commercial as such. And the applicant is here if you have any questions. Be pleased to answer any.
Didn't we consider some kind of zoning change near this location recently?
Yes. To the southeast of the property, we had a zone change, I believe it was to C1.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton before I open up the public hearing? Public hearing is open at 7:28. Anyone can speak without having signed up. Mr. Brinkman.
I yielded that earlier, so I had to make that up. Pablo Brinkman, 39, 28, Oak Park Drive. We represent the owners of this, and we're fortunate enough to put the tenant in here. The applicant is here in the back. And Drew and she taught me some things about this, why we needed it C2. One, it should have been C2 to begin with, but she, if you notice my eyebrows today, they're looking very weak, but she's going to be doing some eyebrow work on me possibly. And so in order to do that, it requires a C2 zoning. And who knew that? So again, we're learning about zoning a little bit, but this is a perfect example. As Drew said, when we went through the Kerrville 2050, it's one that kind of got away that should have been C2 and not a C1. Thank you.
Any other speakers? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:29. Applicants here, would you care to say anything, ma'am? All right. entertain a motion then on ordinance 2025-17.
I'll move to approve the zoning change in ordinance number 2025-17. I'll move to approve the zoning change in ordinance number 2025-17.
Second.
On first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously.
Make that appointment, Pablo.
Just good work.
We'll be judging your eyebrows later, so.
Please come back so we can see that improved.
All right, we have public hearings and resolutions. Do we read end resolutions when we have a public hearing? No, yes, no, all right. 7A, continuation of a public hearing, a resolution, and resolution number 192025, authorizing the creation of Whiskey Springs Public Improvement District in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code. Mr. Hornis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. We've kind of gone through a lot of the meat and potatoes of their development request through the DA. Jennifer Sloan is here from UNICAP on our side.
Our side.
But just to kind of refresh everybody, what is, you know, what are PIT bonds? What are they used for? It's a low-cost source of financing for public improvements. It is a big hurdle for a lot of developments, hence the 20-plus years that that property has kind of sat vacant, right? It gives them an opportunity to kind of front-load a lot of that infrastructure and then get that reimbursement back through the assessments. It's secured by the land. It's not, again, secured by any indebtedness of the city, doesn't affect our credit ratings, no impact on our bond capacity nor our bond rating, and they are responsible for all the PIT creation and bond issuance costs. So that was that previous item for our portion of the costs, but all of the costs of the issuance of this will come through the Whiskey Springs development. Now, those are all reimbursable costs through the PIT bonds, right, because they're a part of that process, so they will likely put those through that way. So how does the tax increment work, right? So it's going to be 100% of the existing appraised value, 70% of the property taxes, the O and M property taxes from future appraised value, and then that 35% tax for the 20 years for the hotel and the sales tax. And the big piece is that, again, it's only, it's only an incentive if it's developed, right? All of this is performance-based. The city's tax dollars are not impacted by this. This is the lowest-impact, highest-use that we could see out of that property, given the acreage, right? Now with that, I will turn it over if you have any questions about the PIT process, resolution creating the PIT, which is included in your packet. And again, Jennifer Sloan, she can help us kind of talk through some of the particulars if you have specifics.
Now, any questions for Mr. Hornis before I open the public hearing? All right, go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:33. Anyone can speak on this subject. Go ahead, please.
So I remember reading it, is there an actual hook or requirement that the, so you're really just talking about the PIT here, but you brought up this other stuff that I think it was designed to be the rebates were going to somehow reduce the actual PIT assessment tax on the actual buyers? Is that something that sounds familiar? And if it does, the question was, how are you going to actually hook that? You know what I'm saying? Do you know, you understand my question?
I believe I do.
Okay.
So they're two separate things, and so the TERS component would be the buy-down of the PIT assessment. The rebates for the sales, for the commercial and for the hotel are separate from that entirely, so.
Mr. Brody, we have to record this, so could you ask your question in a mic?
So the question is, is the TERS money, oh, so is the TERS money that's, I guess, being used to buy down the PIT, how is it getting to the actual PIT payer? Because like, I buy a home there, which isn't going to be possible, so we're just hypothetical?
Sure.
And I'm paying a PIT tax, theoretically, the TERS money is coming back to me? Is that right?
That's correct.
So where's the hook for that? Is it in the PIT document or the TERS document?
It's going to be in both. So when we create the TERS and that project and finance plan, we'll show how that TERS will be used. Again, as he said, there's two different elements. You have the 380 grant for the sales and the hot tax. The TERS money will be used as an offset, so when the PIT assessments are billed each year, they will get a credit from that TERS amount, and that will be placed, so when we, every year when we come before you and show you what the assessments are going to be for the next year, you'll see not only what the assessment was, but what the TERS credit is, and then what the final assessment is.
I know you've been referenced several times, but we have to record this. Could you state your name and?
Yes, Jennifer Sloan, and I'm with UNICAP.
Any other questions for Mr. Hornis or Ms. Sloan? All right. I suppose I should close the public hearing. Close the public hearing at 7:36, and would be happy to entertain a motion on item 7A.
I would approve, I would make a motion to approve 7A, and I just touched the screen and screwed it up. So, number 19-2025, authorizing the creation of the.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Item 7B, resolution number 16-2025, this is also a public hearing. This is a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a daycare services for children on the property located 851 Clay. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a conditional use permit for daycare services for children. The daycare itself will actually be in the C2 zoning district behind it. They're actually only putting the playground on the RT lot. So there's the daycare across the parking lot, they'll have the playground. There are several conditions of approval, limited to the installation of the outdoor playground, no greater than 40 by 60 feet, walkable, or a walkway appropriate for children, their safety be provided from the daycare to the playground. Vehicular access is prohibited from Clay Street, and then, of course, the owner and operator of the daycare services shall all follow all Texas law related to the daycare from Texas Human Resource Code. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this in July. Be pleased to answer any question. Ms. Niles is here to represent the applicant.
Lynn Niles, 1726 Sidney Baker, and the Starks who own the Learning Stampede, this was their third, this will be their third daycare facility, and the state of Texas requires, no ifs, ands, or buts, that you have a playground space for your children. And so fortunately, the owner of, Mr. Ray of H&R Block, who will be our landlord, will be at the rear of that building, owns the vacant lot immediately behind, and it's not in use, so we would just be using a maximum of 40 by 60 fenced and meeting other restrictions or requirements so that they can start daycare. There's real demand in Kerrville for.
Ma'am, there is.
Yes, and so she only left because the baby was not enjoying the meeting.
Aw, man.
Yeah, and.
Please tell her.
I wanted to volunteer to go get her, but.
Please tell her that babies are always welcome.
I did, I told her that, so we really appreciate your consideration.
Right, any questions?
Just have one. She leases from this gentleman, so she would be leasing that portion of the land.
Yes, he coincidentally owns Mr. Ray and his wife, the building that we have assigned lease set to start tomorrow if we are approved for playground space, and he also owns the vacant lot, coincidentally, which is perfect.
It is, I drove over there and I looked at it, and I think it is perfect because it's very close and very walkable.
Very close, and they'll put in nice fencing.
If they should, if ownership should change, though, I just would caution you to have something in the lease that this continues, should the ownership change? That's your business, but I'm just saying, if that is a requirement of the daycare.
Well, buyer would have to honor the lease.
Yes, they would.
That's what I'm saying.
And we have, tentatively, I mean, we have a four-year lease currently.
Okay, good.
That's how we're starting.
Right.
And so.
All right, any questions before I open the public hearing? Or have I already done that? I can't recall.
No, sir, you haven't.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:41. Any member of the public may speak if they have to sign up. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:41. Sir, a motion then on resolution number 16-2025.
I'll move to approve the conditional use permit and adopt resolution number 162025.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. He's just quicker than you.
He is.
I know.
He's on it.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. It's hard to believe we started at 2:00 PM today, but we're getting it. Board appointments, 8A, this is an appointment to the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir, we have vacancies. We had two applicants, Councilmember Seagram and I both spoke to Mr. Justin Foster, as well as Artie Vargas, who wish to serve and are looking forward to it, and I would make the motion to appoint Justin.
I just want, is it Justin? So you have Jason.
I have Justin. I wrote Justin. That's Jason, but it's Justin.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure on the certificate it's right.
Okay, Justin.
Justin, J-U-S-T-I-N.
Thank you.
Foster, thank you. I'll make the motion to appoint Justin Foster and Artie Vargas to the.
I'll second.
There we go.
Can you designate which one's the alternate and which one's the regular?
Artie applied first, so we'd make her the regular.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. I see no need to go into executive session. Are there any items for future agendas? You have a public hearing about it if you want. All right, not hearing any items for future agendas, go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:43.
Well done, Mayor.
Good job, sir.